February 22nd, to call a meeting of the planning board to order. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise a hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. Note this meeting is being recorded for live broadcast and televised replay for Borne TV. If anyone has audio visual recording, please acknowledge this time. Reminder just to silence your phones. First on the agenda is the meeting minutes of 2/8/24.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the meeting minutes for February 8th, 2024 as presented.
Second motion made, second. Any discussion on approving the minutes from the board? The audience, seeing it here now requires a roll call.
Yes.
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 Passes. Next on the agenda is a approval not required for 10 Canal Street, map 11 parcel 29. You can take that link. Yeah, yeah, right there.
Good evening, Brandon Carr with the Preet Engineering. Julia has the plans, but we're here before you. We were here probably about a year and a half, two years ago for the former Friendly's Plaza. And we had a, received a site approval for both the Starbucks, which is getting close to open. But what the owner wants to do is break it into two parcels. So the Starbucks would sit on its own parcel and the existing Friendly's building would have its own parcel. And I believe the planning report has, but the lots meet all the requirements for size, access, frontage. Well, there was a question on the frontage, but actually the smaller of the lot. So the total area of the total parcel is about one and a half acres, a little over. And it's being broken into a little bit more. The Starbucks lot will have a little bit more than an acre. And then the other one will result, it would be a little bit more than half an acre. But that smaller northern lot with the Friendly's building actually has frontage on both sides because it abuts both roads. So it doesn't meet just on canal, it has to be combined. So that's basically it. We brought the sign mylar in the plan, but if anybody has any questions, you know, we're here.
Do you have staff have comment?
I think you received the A and R checklist and it meets all the requirements of an A and R. We did have a conversation about in the future, they would need easements for the stormwater and for, because it was originally done as a shared space, I guess, for stormwater, for ease, access easements.
Yeah, so, yeah, for the septic, for the stormwater, for access, just like a lot of shared parking lots to kind of overlap. Between the two owners, it'd be basically accessed and be able to share parking and use, there's one curb cut on each lot. So if you came in one, you could leave the other. So that would be formulated before either parcel was, you know, transferred to a different owner.
Okay. Any questions, comments from board members?
Chair.
Chris.
I know it's not part of the A and R, but I'm just wondering with this line, this kind of zigzag covering the parking lot, how parking is going to work between those two different buildings? If there's going to be, do you think there will be issues with?
So there would be basically a shared parking agreement. So it's not like if somebody parks on the wrong side of the line, Starbucks is going to run out and have them towed. But that line actually is zigzagged so that both lots meet their parking requirement for zoning.
Good. Any other questions, comments from the board?
Yes, I would say.
Any questions, comments for the audience? An interesting motion?
Make a motion to approve the A and R.
Chris makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussions on the motion from the board? The audience, seeing here now requires a roll call?
Yes.
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 All right. Give me a second to sign. Next on the agenda is a 570 MacArthur Boulevard, support of finding 07/2023. A waiver of special permit site plan review 07/2023, map 39 parcel 77.3, continued from 1/25/24. The application for support of finding and a waiver of the site plan review special permit to convert temporary outdoor dining area into a permanent outdoor dining area to serve the food or beverages to persons outside the building due to the limitations of the indoor dining imposed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the COVID-19 public health emergency. This project is in a water resource district. Staff, have any comments on this?
Yes, we do. I believe you received our comments on the project and Mr. Yu. There were a couple of concerns, I think, at the last meeting, and so those have been addressed. There were vehicles parked in the rear that our zoning enforcement officer will send a letter regarding those.
And that is a condition. Yeah.
Yeah. And then the outdoor dining area that was approved, that looked good. The dumpster will be screened and four trees will be added to the northern part of the property along Forest Park Drive. So three near the sign and then one on the other side of the driveway. And it will be October.
Glory red maples. I'm just going to add to that, that the purpose of that condition is that this subdivision sort of languished for a while and is now coming to life. And we're trying to create a streetscape there with trees. And Mr.
Chenrith.
Chenrith, okay, has kindly agreed to be part of that effort, so.
Excellent. Do you have any other question? Do you want to make a statement or a comment?
I just want to know what is the deadline that we move our trailer, our stuff out? My staff want to know that so they can rush up, so.
Yeah.
Chris.
I did go down and I spoke to Dee onsite when he got back from Cambodia. And I think because of the time of the year, we should give him a substantial amount of time to at least get the plantings in. He agreed that after the snow was gone and he could get access to the vehicles, that he would move them. But as you know, we get a snowstorm once in every five years. It just happened to happen during the time that he's trying to get out. So he did promise he'd get all that stuff out of there within reason. And he did, I talked to him about screening in the dumpster and he agreed to that. So I think he's agreed to everything, so I'm satisfied with.
There's no timing specified in the conditions here?
No.
We could put timing on it or we could have faith.
I want to put the timing, please, so they know.
Okay, so.
What would work for you, three months? What would work for?
Put the timing so they can rush up, you know.
May 1st?
Yeah. I was going to say June 1st. And the reason I'm saying June 1st is because if you look at last May and last June, we didn't even go over 70 degrees until the end of June.
I think we can do before spring.
If you can do that, that's fine.
I'll try my best before spring.
I would rather have a little bit of cushion for.
So May 1st is basically a month and it's like a little more than that, is that right? No, that's wrong.
March 19th before spring, I am probably no problem.
Okay, so you want to move it, so how about April 1st?
I just want to get it out fast, you know.
Get it done.
I'm going to say April 1st.
Appreciate that, you give it more, more time.
Yep.
Okay. It's fine, we're able to do it.
Any other questions or comments from the board members? In the audience?
Okay. Entertain a motion? All right, I will make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I reviewed application 072023 SF submitted by the applicant Chenrith U, owner of Stur crazy. The property is located at 570 MacArthur Boulevard, shown on map 39 parcel 77.3 in a business district, a B4 district. A restaurant is an allowed use according to section 2220. The applicant proposes to convert an existing temporary outdoor dining area into a permanent outdoor dining area to serve food and beverages to persons outside the building due to the limitations on indoor dining imposed in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in March 2020 from the COVID-19 public health emergency. The existing temporary outdoor dining area is determined to be a preexisting use. The planning board is the permitting granting authority according to section 2220 of the Borne zoning bylaw. Based on the planning board's review of the exhibits, testimony of the applicant, experts, witnesses, and the record of the proceedings, the planning board finds that the proposed alteration will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming use of outdoor dining. Therefore, based on the aforementioned finding, I move to approve application 072023 SF with the following conditions. One, this permit is subject to all rules, regulations, and bylaws of the town of Borne. Two, adequacy of sewerage system is deferred to the health department. Three, adequacy of emergency access is deferred to the fire department. Four, the dumpster must be adequately screened. Five, the west of the property will undergo cleanup. The applicant is to remove any boats and vehicles stored on the west side of the property by April 1st. Six, a total of four October glory red maple trees with a minimum caliper of three inches are to be installed along Forest Park Drive at about 30 feet on center. Three trees to be installed to the west side of the restaurant sign before the driveway and one tree installed to the west of the driveway entrance. Seven, this decision will, shall be reported at the Barnstable County Registry of Beads, Land Court Registry, and a copy returned to the planning department. So moved.
Okay, April 1st for the cause.
I put in April 1st.
Very good. I have a motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. Any discussions in the board on a motion to approve? The audience? Seeing requires a roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes, unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dee.
Thank you.
What's that?
No, you're, you.
You're, you're, you're good.
You're good, you don't need anything. You're all done. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is enforcement of special permit 022020, 274 Williston Road, map 7 parcel 48. It's continued from 11124, the landscape corrective actions request.
So this is for 274 Williston Road. The applicant has a special permit for a backlot. And they put in a residential house, one single family house. Part of the special permit conditions and covenant was a 25-foot buffer along the stone wall. And also there's 10-foot buffers along their driveway to access the property. They came in a couple of months ago to the planning board. They were called into the planning board because they have cleared out that area. And they submitted a proposed landscaping plan dated February 16th to the planning office, which we distributed to the board. And they are proposing 74 rhododendron trees along the stone wall and the back edge of the lot of, I believe, 276 Williston. So I think the board has all those, the plan, the proposed plan.
And Doc?
Anyone wants to?
I'd like your input on.
Well, first, could you clarify on the conditions on the approval? I thought it was north, west, and south, the buffers to be preserved. Do you actually have the?
Well, the southern edge, that's under conservation jurisdiction. Is that where you're talking?
Southern, well, the eastern edge is conservation. So what about this western wall and that at least down to the, down to the buffer zone on the south wall? Do you, I don't have the decision with me. Do you actually have that language, what the? I thought it was three sides.
Yeah, and I believe it is, and along the driveway. Yeah.
One side, there still is 50 feet or more of original growth. It hasn't been disturbed.
That's on the east side. That is towards the, the wetlands. Okay. I think, I'd like to just have a graphic that we can review. Because it seems to me the important thing here is to establish the scope of what we're doing. It seems to me this may become a jury. And, oh, can you say one for me?
I understand that we are talking about saying buffers.
Sure. This is by your engineer at the time, Bracken. They laid out the buffer zones. And it also shows the 100-foot buffer to the wetland and the 100-foot buffer to the coastal bank on the east side. On the second page, I tried to blend them, do a sort of hybrid of the plot plan and the air photo. The white lines, I think, are pretty accurate because there were stone walls to follow. There were dimensions on the engineered drawing. And those are, I think, pretty accurate. The coastal buffer is approximate, but I want to talk about that. This in May of 2023, the dark green I take to be hydroseed. Was that hydroseeded last year about this year?
I'm not sure of the dark green, but yeah, most of the lawn was hydroseeded.
Hydroseeded, right. I'm guessing it's.
Twice, first time it was late fall. It didn't take well and it was re-hydroseeded after that.
So given that, we'll specify that the buffer line is approximate. It was very hard because it moved. Did you do any work within the coastal buffer zone? The coastal bank buffer zone?
Well.
Was it, was it well marked?
100-foot buffer?
100-foot buffer.
Yes, yes, we did. But, but this was with Brad Homes and in.
Conservation.
Conservation. You can go within 50 feet of the wetlands with, with, this, this was approved by conservation and Brad Homes.
He said 50 feet?
Yes.
All right, that's good enough for me then. What about at 272, they have that white vinyl fence, their eastern wall? That's the question I have. I thought that was part of the mandated vegetated buffer to be preserved. So what we are trying to decide is what the scope of the restoration is.
Well, there's, there's a vinyl fence there right now.
Sure.
And his lawn, we have about 48 feet of lawn from us to that white vinyl fence. There's very little property there. And it's a lawn, it's got sprinkler heads and, and Luanne had talked about putting trees, but it's such a small area, I don't want to make it any smaller.
Well, we're talking past each other a little bit. My question is, should that have been a protected buffer? And, and I thought in the conditions, it said the western side too.
I thought it was along a hole, that, that left-hand edge from, from his property.
Whose property? What number?
The lot that I sold, I sold.
The 272s.
272, okay.
I sold that lot. And I thought it was from his back corner all the way back to the marsh, basically. And there is, there's this 50 or 75 feet of briars and brush and just fallen trees and it's a mess in there.
Agreed. Agreed the south side is, appears to be a protected vegetated buffer.
Yeah.
What about between you and 272? It, the buffer is shown, it's, the buffer is shown on Bracken's drawing. And my question is, is, is that part of the scope of this project? We can talk about the plantings next, but I want to understand what are we responsible for remediating?
There's lawn along that fence, that's the only thing that's there.
I get that. If you look on the third page, it used to be forest. That's what I'm getting at. It used to be forest. Was it part of what we specified as a protected vegetated buffer?
Staff was saying, yes, supposed to be protected.
There you have it. All right, so that's part of our scope of restoration. That against your neighbor's east vinyl fence is part of the restoration scope.
Okay.
Now, I happen to like rhododendrons as much as the next guy. But just a line of rhododendrons across the north stone wall and across the west side of 276, we can do better. What I'm thinking, people complain because they, we, I believe, I was one of the reviewers on this project. Steve Strony was the other. And I see, I see him remember on the file, we got a letter from 40 Pilgrim Road saying, "We know this is likely to happen. Can you please control the project so that they are not in our view shed? Can you protect some buffer of our view?"
She's moved, they, they moved.
Sure, but the covenant runs with the deed.
I understand.
Okay. So what I'm going to suggest is CMS can do good work. I, this has the feeling of what's the least we can do to clean up this mess? I'm hoping that we can work with CMS and do a reasonable restoration. Let me give an example. If on the third page, the photo shows your Pilgrim Road neighbors, the second page also shows them.
Got it.
So if you stood on the backyard of 49 Pilgrim and looked towards your house, let's just say there was a corridor 30, 40 feet wide. I think the spirit of the restoration would be put in something like white pines, you know, a grove of white pines. Maybe at 32 Pilgrim, they're, they're looking directly down at your house. Just what is, what is the point-to-point view shed there? And put another cops of white pines, mix in some red maples, the native types of plants. Any place where your neighbor can see you and you can see your neighbor, I'd like to try and replicate what was there in a way. I mean, these are going to be, these are going to be, what, seven to eight-foot pine trees and, you know, 10-foot. What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is we need to work with CMS and come up with a plan that satisfied the people who complained, for one, about now the house is sort of in their face. I'm hoping we can work together.
Okay. I had white pines in North Grove. I planted a bunch of them along a strip very similar to this. They got big and ugly and I wound up cutting every single one down and put in a few hemlocks and a few arborvitae's. And the arborvitae's did very well, they were a very nice border.
Yeah, what I'm, my point is, is this is not a power line substation. You've seen them on the highway where you have a chain link fence and then arborvitae's in a box around them. That's not this, that's not that situation. And these, these rhododendrons, they'll be fine in 15 years, planted six to eight feet apart. What I'm suggesting is that we try to do a facsimile of the existing vegetation here. And, and I'm not saying a solid wall, I'm not talking about a, a prison wall screen. I'm talking about where is the key sensitivities? That's between their back deck and the side of your house. And maybe you just go out there with CMS and say, a bunch of pine trees. You stand here and you stand there and between there is pine trees at 20 feet on center. And then it will actually help the value of your property if you do something like river birches and amylakias in front of them so that they are all native plants. They look fine in the spring, some shrubs, some native shrubs, just a mixed community. Not a, a power line substation treatment. That's what, that's what I'm hoping for.
Dan? Yeah, that was my comment. Even when I, when we used to, a million years ago, we owned a landscape business, I would never put a single specimen hedge in, and for that distance especially, because one thing goes wrong and it's an eyesore. And you can never get them to grow alike. And they are going to be covered with, with briars and so forth. That's a lot of work and upkeep. But what you're doing here is you're trying to reestablish the buffer that was removed. This is what remediation is.
It was mostly briars and dead diseased trees.
It doesn't matter, that's what happens in a natural forest growth. And that's part of what allows things to re-vegetate and do their thing. It's woods, you were supposed to leave it there. So I know cleaning it up, you know, is what you'd like to have for your views, but this was called a buffer, it's not a hedge.
Yeah.
So you can't just put in, and these roadies, honestly, the maximums, they get to be long, tall branches with no lower foliage underneath even, you'll be able to see right through them when they're mature.
I think in the decision, one of the conditions allowed you to maintain the ground plane. That is anything dead or dying, that was a threat to life and limb. And I'd be flexible on the cat briars. I think just trying to establish a forest, a forest edge and then use that as a background for your own personal landscaping, you could make it quite, you could, you could increase the value of your property. But I'd like us to be thoughtful about this.
Would, would you and/or Jeannie work together with CMS and meet in the town hall?
Happy to.
And work over with CMS to come up with a plan?
I hate to lock CMS in. If they know they're doing the job, I'm going to get soaked, you know. They can advise, but, but I don't want to tie them.
How about if you work with Jeannie and Doc?
Absolutely.
And come up with a solid solution from, from the town's point of view? And then have it put out to bid, whatever you want to do with a plan?
Yes.
And then that would have to be approved by us?
Yep.
Because we want to make sure that the town is protected and your neighbors are protected.
Yeah.
So we want to, instead of just, because again, this row of roadies that, that came up, I don't, I don't think there's many people here that would agree that's a solution to restore the vegetative buffer.
Should I just, yeah. I mean, when I listen to this discussion, what I hear is, I want a beautiful landscape, you know, kind of like what I was used to living, when I lived in Florida, everything is landscaped. Versus a naturalized existing buffer, which is what there was, that was removed. It's kind of hard to reestablish that, so it's going to be a little more thoughtful.
It's an interpretation of what was there.
Yeah. It's not just going to be like, you know, we're not just trying to screen, we're actually trying to establish what was taken. And it's not that easy.
So would you, would you guys work together with the applicant?
I'm away.
Yeah, you're gone in March, so.
But you can be in communication and sure, and back and forth.
And you can run with it, but we can be in communication.
Yeah, you guys are solid on that.
I think establish some principles, that is, buffer the view from your neighbors, some evergreens. And it doesn't have to be continuous, these can be. And it doesn't have to be continuous, these can be sort of groves that build up and thin down, and the species can vary. And the dark stuff, I don't know, you'd put a river birch in front of it, boom, it sticks out. Anything that flowers in the spring would pop out. And we can set some general guidelines, not design it, but just some general guidelines and
CMS may have some ideas too.
And then you can take it to your preferred, you know, landscape.
Yeah.
And see what they come up with.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments from the board?
Chris? This is not a comment to the current applicants. This is just a reminder to the board that this is why in the past we have frowned upon backlot subdivisions. Because the backlot subdivision invariably affects other people than just the owner of the land. It affects their neighbors. And that's why we've always kind of shied away from it, because you end up getting somebody upset. They're used to something natural, and you can never reestablish what was naturally always there.
But they weren't supposed to remove it.
I know they weren't supposed to, but if we did not approve the backlot subdivision, we wouldn't have this issue.
That's true, that is true.
But that's what makes a backlot subdivision so hard to get.
And it's so hard to get because of the space and everything, and that's why we usually frown upon it. Just something to keep in the back of your head as you continue on in the future.
There could have been three houses on that lot. If a builder had bought that instead of us, I think there would have been three houses. And the neighbors really would have been crowded.
What I'm going to say, sir, is this, if it was the board that we had years ago, they'd never would have approved this for three houses or one house. Backlot subdivisions are frowned upon because they're always a pain that come back to haunt us. Should never have been approved, in my opinion, but that's up to the board.
Yes, but that's
That's already, that's already, of course, is already out of the barn, for sure.
So any other comments?
Come on. We might go a little bit beyond seven-thirty for our meeting.
My name is Glenn Tripp. I live at 276 Wilson Road. I'm liking what I'm hearing from the board because as Elizabeth said, that what's gone is gone. It can never be the same. His proposal to me, I think, is a joke. Rhododendrons, like you said, it looks like a power line subdivision. And I think there's something that y'all missed, is besides his plan, he's, he's doing the rock wall in the other, the other way behind my property.
The rock wall, what, which, which, which side of your property, the east side?
May I stand up?
Sure.
Okay, which one would be mine?
Right there.
Okay, this wasn't supposed to be touched. I have twenty-five feet back here as well. And if you look at the plan on the conditions, I think it's number three on the, the plan, the ten-foot buffer zone along his driveway was not supposed, that's all supposed to be vegetated as well.
Yes, that'd be part of the restoration.
There's nothing on his that says anything about that.
That, that's going to be addressed with, with the planting board members, Jeannie and Doc.
Okay, well, I mean, I just saw what his plan was, and that's not, that's not even mentioned on
Exactly. We, we know that that, along the driveway, the ten-foot buffer is supposed to be restored as well.
And I'm just, I mean, I like what Mr. O'Connor is saying, that we need different, I don't want, we don't need rhododendrons. What was, what was there was pine, maple, oak, raspberry bushes, lady slippers, the, the whole works. I know there were vines in there, but that's just what Sagamore Beach is. You know, grapevines, whatever. But they took everything down, everything. And, you know, besides, I mean, I, I, it just aggravates me to no end because there's supposed to be nothing behind my, behind my house, there's supposed to be twenty-five feet of vegetation. He's got a lawn back there within three feet of my shed. It's, it's ridiculous. I don't, I don't know how it got missed, I don't know, I mean, my wife even went out and tried to stop the contractors when this was happening. And it just kept going. I, I have old Google pictures of showing, you know, the vegetation, the treetops, and then a few months later, they're all gone. He had a chance not to do it, but he continued to do it.
It might be good to have those pictures.
I, I, would you like to see them?
Well, no, not right now, but they might.
Okay.
Submit them to the planning.
Yeah, submit them to these folks so that they
To the planning department.
I mean, we have before and after pictures, I mean, I don't know how many people on the board have been to that area or saw what it looked like before and what it looks like now. There's nothing, nothing, absolutely nothing.
I saw it before, yeah.
There's still a lot of briars on the property along that pilgrim lane. There's still from
I don't live on pilgrim lane, so those neighbors can talk about what they need to complain about.
Those briars need to come down in order to
We, we will work on a restoration plan.
Yeah.
With, with you, but with the town that's going to be satisfied. And then the, your butters will, will have input on the final plan as well.
Hope it doesn't drag out. I'd love to get
No, we're the same, the same. So that's why I was wondering, what, what date do you want to continue this to? How much time would you need? Approximately, would you need two weeks or a month?
I mean, a couple of weeks.
Two weeks, so our next meeting?
Just to get out and see, yeah, and get a head start. I'm not designing it, so.
So the next meeting would be?
The next meeting is the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth?
Because you're going to skip that one, right?
Yeah, it would be March twenty-eighth, because our next one would be March sixth, and that's cutting it real close.
Yeah, okay.
So the twenty-eighth?
Mm-hmm.
So we want to continue this, March twenty-eighth?
Send those in, they'll help with reconstructing everything.
What is electronic, can you send them electronically?
I'm like, if I brought them into the office, can I just
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, two things. If you want to drop those off at the planting office, we'll scan them in, we'll return them to you.
Okay.
So we'll, so we'll have the card, we'll copy them and put them in our file.
Okay.
That's actually good.
You'll get, you'll get the originals back.
And the pictures that I feel was relative.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, so we can see what was there.
That would be good. So what I'd like to do is continue this to March twenty-eighth.
Can I also ask something, just for my own clarification for the future? So if we establish this and it went as it should have, the twenty-five-foot vegetated buffer means you don't own it to landscape it, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
So, so when the restoration goes in, everything within that buffer, the ten feet on my driveway, the twenty-five feet behind my house, and the twenty-five feet going up the stone wall, once it's, once things are put back, you leave it alone?
That'll be all part of the condition.
Well, I'm just
You can't, you can't maintain it?
That'll be all part of the condition with
Okay, okay.
We'll work with conservation.
I definitely want to maintain it, I want it to look good.
We're not trying to make it a landscape location, we're trying
Yeah, but I want it to look good, I don't want
I know you do, but you know, birds need, guess what lives in the briars, birds.
Whatever the conditions were, are supposed to be enforced, and whatever conditions that we put on it will be enforced. That's what we're trying to say. We're trying to work with you. So if you can work with us, that's what we're asking.
I'm good.
So just point of information for the board is, I probably won't be here for the next two meetings, so that will include the twenty-eighth. So I don't know if you need to call anybody else that's not going to be here then.
Okay.
Yeah, I know you need to certain amount of votes, so.
Yep, five. Yeah. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to continue to March twenty-eighth.
Still moved.
Motion by Liz, who have a second.
Second.
Motion by Jim, uh, second by Jim. Motion made a second, to continue to March twenty, any discussion from the board, from the audience? Do you understand what's going on?
What's the continuance going to do?
We're going to, in that timeframe, we're going to, we're going, they're, they're going to convene with the, the owner, come up with a, an idea for a plan that, to restore the property.
Okay.
Along the lines.
Along those lines. And, and in that time, hopefully he can get a contractor to come up with and design a plan to submit to us, so we have a plan for approval.
Okay.
That's what, we don't draw the plan out.
No, but I understand it. So in between what you guys are doing with him, do we submit any input? I mean, I don't want, I don't want to, it doesn't make any sense to put a two, two-and-a-half-foot tree on the property. I think it should be a mature tree.
That's what, that's what
Ten, fifteen, you know
What Doc was saying, six to eight, something like that.
I mean, when, when they were thirty feet tall and they're gone.
Right, but you're not going to put a thirty-foot tree back.
Oh, no, I understand it, but not a two-and-a-half-foot either.
No, no, that's why we said, six to eight. And that's why they're going to look at the different species, because we want to make sure that the right species goes in the right space, the right size.
Right, I mean
Just like we did with the, with the previous approval that we just did.
Right, I heard
Came up with the size and the caliber and spacing. And that's exactly what they would do here.
Alright.
So with the motion, continue. Any further discussion?
Just one comment.
Yes.
I, I'd like to think that we could have something for this year's planting season.
That'd be great.
Now, a lot depends on how fast your landscape professional can come up with a plan, gets approved, get it out to bid, or they install it and how backed up they are. But I, I would try to make the spring season. No guarantees.
Okay.
Mr. O'Connor, can you read this?
Sure, sure.
So with that motion, no further discussion? Saying not, what's that?
No, just, to make it whole, I'd like when, when they figure it out. I don't, I don't, I wouldn't like a tree every four feet. In between those trees, there should be bushes. You know, what was natural there before, like I said, raspberries. I don't, like along my driveway, I don't want five trees down the whole length.
The, the two people that are going to be addressing this
Okay. I'm just trying to make a clip.
Landscape architects, that, that was and is their profession.
Okay.
They're not going to be throwing this together.
The space next to your driveway is ten feet wide.
Right.
So there'll be some variation, but it won't, it won't be a deep stagger. It's ten feet wide, that's less than from here to there.
No, I, I understand.
That ten feet is going to overgrow it. It's going to, both sides is going to overgrow.
What?
We're, we're working, we're working.
We're working on a plan.
Yes.
That's all we're trying to do here.
Yeah.
And we understand your ten-foot buffer along your driveway, the twenty-five-foot buffer to the backside of your property, the whole stretch along the stone wall, the other one at two seventy
Well, that, that, that's, that, that wasn't disturbed.
Well, we're just going to make sure that it's all done, because over here, it shows grass, so we're going to make sure it's all part of the plan. So with that, requires a roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So, set up, set up a time?
Yeah, we'll talk first.
Yep, and then they'll, they'll get in contact with you, set up a time to meet at town hall. Okay? So they, they will work with you to set up a time to be in town hall?
Thank you very much.
To go over this, okay? Thank you, guys. I want to thank everybody for their patience.
It'll show up.
Tom would join the fun.
Again, just, just a reminder to the board members, because I'm not going to be on the board forever. This is what happens with backlot subdivisions, and it happens every time. Mr. Meyer was on the board before we had problems with him.
Okay, now it's being, it's after, it's after seven-thirty, so what we're doing on the agenda is a joint session for accessory dwelling zoning bylaw update.
And you want to pull up the presentation?
One, or A is to vote to enter into a joint session with the zoning board of appeals, born housing partnership, and the born housing trust. B to discuss proposed amendments to accessory dwelling sections of the born zoning bylaw. And C, vote to adjourn joint session with the zoning board of appeals, born housing partnership, born housing trust, and reconvene the planning board in regular session.
Move to adjourn the regular meeting?
Karen, so Peter?
I need to see on Zoom who the participants are.
Yeah, exactly. We've got the list here, but so we just want to make sure we get a quorum from each. So I, thank you, Peter. Julia, Julia's working on that.
Technical advisor.
We have a quorum.
I know that.
I appreciate you guys coming out, I really do.
Yes.
And for those who zoomed in, I appreciate them joining us as well.
It's not like it's no Don't even say that word. Hey, I got to use my tablet already, I was excited.
We don't have, we are the only participant on Zoom right now, just so you know.
Nobody else on?
No, we just, that's what we're checking, so thank you for your patience.
Normally, we have the screen up that shows all those Zoom people that logged in.
Right, okay, right.
Full disclosure, I'm married to Chris Pine on the ZBA, who's running the meeting. I just told him. Hopefully they'll jump on now.
Oh, God, alright.
Oh, I can see the number participating.
Is it growing?
I'm not supposed to be checking.
I do.
You do, I know, I look at it.
Yeah, I'm just Jim had sent out the second
How's the trust? We just need one more member, right?
That's what this is, right?
For a quorum?
I think so.
Partnership. I'm the trust.
Okay.
Now Kathy Fox Alphano is trying to log in, and it says, says host has another meeting in progress. That's what it says when I signed on Zoom.
Says we have another meeting in progress?
That wouldn't surprise me.
Are we logged into two different meetings?
Welcome to Zoom.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's the, that's, makes sense.
That's the IT, the IT
It's like turn it off, turn it on, turn it off, turn it back on.
Can we get a twelve-year-old in here to fix all this?
I know, so sad.
What's ridiculous to me is that the answer is still to turn it off and turn it back on. Which is my answer for my entire computer.
It works.
That's what AT&amp;T tried to do today. Turn it off and turn it back on.
Which my father taught me way back when, when he worked for the A's.
But I was learning coding in high school, so my
It's probably a great saying, too, and it's absolutely true. This is what I feel about AI. AI garbage, it's my fault. Be honest, you know? I'm just being an old codger.
That was back in the day when we used to do printouts, and we wrote the whole language, so it looked like Max's initiative, like a mouse.
Excuse me. Well, I, as a child, grew up, we made reads out of the IBM cards. That was because my father worked for IBM, he would come home with these, they were all loaded, and then when I went to school, programming, using those.
Yeah.
Now, that, that passed within my cards. I know, right? So you'd have to go run your cards. It's pretty bad in that. So would I. I had a PC junior in nineteen eighty-four from my father, because
Oh, there we go.
He was running, actually, I, I was
Sorry about that.
I'd do it rather quickly and I'd play games.
So we probably want to convene the joint session.
Yep.
I may move to adjourn the regular meeting.
Thank you for your patience.
Now we have to call to order or?
Yeah. I just wanted to see if, we'll start, well, my list that says the zoning board of appeals, I just want to make sure that they're present and have a quorum. Nice echo. So the ZBA has a quorum?
Yes.
Thank, thank you. The housing trust?
Well, you might want to see who's participating.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I just want to make sure, we got them. Does the born housing trust have a quorum?
Kathy Fox Alphano and I are here, I do not see anybody else.
So you got, you just need three?
We need three.
So you got three?
It's Jim Donahue.
Jim Donahue's on there, so yeah.
Is Jim on? Okay, good.
And then the housing partnership?
I don't know if we have a quorum. I know, I know Jim is on the partnership as well, him and myself, and I don't know Kathy. Kathy, are you on the partnership as well or just the trust?
She's on the trust.
I said trust, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You might not have a quorum.
I'm on the partnership.
Yes, that's right, that's right, that is. Alright, so we're good then.
So you, you've got a quorum?
Yeah, I think we got, I think it was just three for the quorum.
Okay.
And then the, the trust is Peter, right? Judith and Jim Donahue, right?
And Kathy.
And Kathy, so I think we're good.
Okay.
Being seven forty-six, I'll call to trust to order.
What about this ZBA?
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. And the members of the ZBA that are present are?
James Fire Chairman?
Yep.
Chris Pine Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Elsa Beistr, Associate Member?
Thank you.
You're a cool member.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yes.
I'm not used to that.
Wade Keane, member?
Thank you.
And Stephen Kay, an Associate Member?
Oh, very good, thank you, Steve, thanks for showing up. There you go. Look, we appreciate that. What we've done.
Wait, so Pete, Peter convened the housing trust.
Who, did we convene?
Well, we need to vote for, for the convening of the housing trust and partnership.
Anybody wanna make a motion on, uh, to call to joint meeting of the housing trust and the housing partnership?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to enter into a joint session with the, um, born housing partnership, the born housing trust, and the zoning board of appeals, and the planning board.
Alright, second.
We need a roll call.
Roll call, yes, yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
And they gotta.
Do you want us to call on them?
Yeah.
Uh, Jim Donahue?
Yes.
Kathy Fox Alfano?
Yes.
Sorry, I can't see the other names up there, they're a little bit of a blur.
Yes.
Uh, Wade Kane?
Yes.
James Byer?
Yes.
Elsa Beistrum?
Yes.
And Stephen Kane?
Yes.
Thank you, I think that covers everybody.
I think you did.
Yes, very good.
Good job.
Alright, now what we'll do is, now that we're in session, we'll discuss the proposed amendments to the accessory dwelling sections of the born zoning bylaw. Just so you have an idea, the, the planning board has been working or discussing this for a number of years off and on, and we finally put it down on the paper, and we're just looking for ideas for a, an article for town meeting vote, to try to do this, the, born is the last of the fifteen community, right?
Last of two.
Well, yes, but Yarmouth just, they didn't join it? Okay, there's only, okay, there's still two communities that don't have it by right. It's Yarmouth and then born, so the only two. So, uh, there's thirteen, the other ones have done it, so we're just looking for the, that discussion is to go from special permit and to get it by right, and again, with, with zoning, is to try to protect it.
Sorry, to have what by right?
Accessory dwelling.
Okay, sorry.
Yep. So, John, do you wanna mention anything on this?
Uh, there's a number of things that we've looked at and, and discussed. First and foremost is to create additional affordable housing, long-term housing, workforce housing, traveling nurses, there's a number of facets to it. The planning staff had done some research on this, and under the current special permit process, which is allowable under forty thousand square foot lots or, or larger, eighty-two percent of the lots in town are not an allowable ADU lot. And so it really limits the amount of more affordable housing we could create under this current zoning regulations. So, we're simply looking to join most other towns that have started to, uh, create initiatives to create more affordable housing, and this is one that's been successful in other towns, in other states, in other parts of the country. And we would like to move forward and, uh, hope that we would have support to, uh, put a zoning article before town meeting that would make this, uh, pretty much in line with the, what the Cape Cod Commission's recommended zoning regulations are to create this, and what the other towns in Barnstable County, all but one other have already approved. And also, I know some information about Plymouth has done this, and they're having good success with it as well.
Also, we're, we're not trying to, uh, have any short-term rentals out of this. We're trying to get year-round rentals or housing out of this, and that's what we're trying to do, is not to try to get, uh, anything like B-broad.
AirBnB or that sort of thing. We're recommending a ninety-day minimum, uh, rental, which would allow for some of the summer workforce housing, um, workforce housing in general, off-season from the schools and so forth. So the intent is not to create short-term Airbnb-style housing, but to solve the problems of long-term affordable by virtue of a smaller space to be more affordable, and also for some of the workforce housing needs.
Could I ask a question?
Who's this, so just?
I'm, this is Jim Byer, I'm the chairman of the ZBA.
Yep, yep, I'm sorry, Jim, it's just your name, I can't read it from here, that's the reason, I, thank you.
Anyway, um, I'd like to ask, uh, I looked over the amendments that you guys are proposing, and I'm pretty much in agreement. And I fully agree that we need more accessible housing in Florida, no question about that. My only question is about why, where about, how did it come about the, uh, the a thousand square foot limitation on the additional dwelling?
Jen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I think if I do the presentation first, then we can answer a lot of the questions, rather than starting with the discussion, but.
I think we have, what, eight slides?
Yes, I just have a few slides, so I wanted to thank everybody for attending tonight. I did send out the redline draft of the accessory dwellings, the proposed, um, for the discussion tonight, so I just wanna make sure everybody has that, okay.
Now, I got, I got that, but I, I guess, maybe I go over further. You, you established in the, in the amendment, in the amendment, a limit of a thousand square foot for a thou- for accessory dwelling, and I think that's a little, um, it's a little too restrictive, in my view, because, um, if you, if you, I think that doesn't account for the fact that somebody might wanna have a garage, which would be included in the, um, total square footage. That only leaves eight hundred square feet for the rest of whatever it is that somebody's gonna provide, and I think that's a little restrictive, I think that thousand square feet should be eliminated or should be increased.
Okay, very good. Give us one second for the, for the slideshow.
You can go to that slide.
And we'll come back, and we'll, we'll discuss that particular item.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I do just have a few slides, just to kinda give everybody a perspective on where we are with the accessory dwellings. So our current zoning bylaw, um, is regulated through section four-one-two-zero of our zoning bylaw. Currently, a zoning board of appeals special permit is, um, required for an accessory dwelling. The zoning board of appeals is the special permit granting authority. Uh, the dwelling must serve a significant community purpose, such as facilitating care for the elderly or handicap, or providing housing at an unusually low cost, that's section four-one-two-three-A. It must be attached to the primary dwelling, and a variance.
That's the present, that's the present law, correct?
Correct, this is the, the current zoning bylaw. A variance from the zoning board of appeals is required if the accessory dwelling is detached from the principal dwelling, and a gross floor area lot coverage worksheet per our zoning bylaw for the non-conforming lot section is needed for accessory dwellings to accompany the zoning board of appeals application. If the accessory dwelling is more than thirty percent of the gross floor area, then a variance, um, from the zoning board of appeals is required. So, housing summary, our, our housing goal is to create, um, an adequate supply of housing that is safe and healthy and attainable for people of all income levels and diverse needs to purchase or rent. That is one of our, you know, this is the overall goal of, um, the born housing. Amending the accessory dwelling zoning bylaw is a priority goal in born's local comprehensive plan from two thousand nineteen, and our housing production plan, uh, that was recently approved in, um, two thousand twenty-three. Of the fifteen Cape Cod towns, um, thirteen towns allow accessory dwellings by right, while two are by special permit. Approximately, and this is, um, this is one of the facts that came out of when we were working on the housing production plan, and actually, part of the regional housing, um, strategy, their marketing study, twenty-eight percent of the workers commute on Cape from off Cape due to the high housing costs, which is very substantial, so there is a lot of, yeah, yeah, that's a very substantial number. Uh, next. This is on, uh, the handout table, and I think I, I sent it to everybody, and it's also on our website. This is the, um, accessory dwelling inventory for the Cape, and it's a chart that goes through all of the fifteen towns, and it goes through, um, things such as size, uh, the design standards, the maximum, um, you know, lot size, and it has, um, it's a nice chart for everybody to use as a reference. Next. There are different types of accessory dwellings. They can be detached, as you see in the, um, the upper left. They can be attached, the upper middle, or above a garage. Uh, they can also be interior in the lower level, um, interior on an upper level, um, or a garage conversion. Okay, next. Our, our, um, this is to go over the zoning districts and lot sizes. So, accessory dwellings are allowed, um, currently in the following districts. Our residential are forty and eighty, our village business district, our B-two and B-four business districts, and also our downtown district, which has its own, uh, zoning bylaw within, within the bylaw, it's section twenty-eight-hundred of our zoning bylaw. Uh, we have a total of, uh, seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight single-family lots. The percentage of those, the number of lots under forty thousand square feet is six thousand four hundred and nine. So eighty-two percent of the single-family lots in town currently require a special permit for an accessory dwelling. So that's substantial. And, accessory dwelling goals, uh, so the goal of updating this section of the bylaw is to, um, permit it as a by-right accessory use to a lawful single-family dwelling use. Require a building permit only with a site plan, floor plan, and elevations, allowing it to be attached or detached to the principal structure. It would have to be subordinate and less than fifty percent of the gross floor area of the principal single-family dwelling. It must be in conformance with all state and local building, uh, building codes, including the title five. The design would maximize the appearance of a single-family residential property. The principal dwelling and the ADU must remain in common ownership, which cannot be severed. So that's important, so you would not be able to split your lot and sell that accessory dwelling as a single-family home. And the ADU cannot be used for boarding, lodging, or other commercial uses, except for a home occupation. And, um, it may be rented for periods not shorter than ninety days at a time, and they are prohibited from any uses as rental units on a weekly or daily basis. So that covers the short-term rental part of it. And then, lastly, the benefits of accessory dwellings are to increase the availability and quality of smaller year-round housing, sustain our workforce to support the local economy, facilitate aging in place for elderly homeowners, so they can remain in their home, and it can also increase the flow of income for younger families, so that they can afford to purchase a home, and, um, better use and expansion of our housing stock. So, I think that's just a, a brief summary overview of kind of what has been going on. So now, I don't know if you wanna go through?
Yeah, but I, I just wanna go back to the, the discussion on the maximum of two bedrooms and one thousand square feet, supported to, and no greater than fifty percent of the maximum gross floor area of the primary single-family dwelling. The question is to add a garage, and then you only end up with an eight hundred square feet. So, with that discussion, how do we, when I say we, we as everybody feel about leaving it at a thousand, or increasing it, or deleting it? I just wanna make sure that we all understand the pros and cons, yes?
I think if somebody has a larger home, then they build a small one at one thousand. Kinda loses some continuity there. So that, that's a pretty small footprint.
That's if they put on it detached.
If it's detached, that's too small.
Right.
So I, so I think a thousand square feet, in my opinion, needs to be more flexible.
Okay.
The other question I have is, uh, if it was a ways away from the primary residence, and they have, uh, real property available, can it be a separate subject system as well?
Okay, because, there's, there's houses in Buzzards Bay on lots that are eight hundred square feet or less, seven fifty, eight hundred square feet, and a thousand would be bigger than, and they're only supposed to be, you know, not, not supposed to be greater than, we realize that. So, there was a lot of places that a thousand would look small, there's other places a thousand would look large. But, you know, you know, so I just wanna make sure we, or greater than a thousand, and I understand your, your point on that, on that, on the lot. So, how could we address?
May I speak, I think that.
I just gotta tell me your name, because somebody's taking minutes on this, and we.
My name is James Byer.
Yeah, James, thank you.
Chairman of the born.
Yeah, we got you, go ahead.
Anyway, so, um, I just look, I'm an architect, so I think about design, and I just looked at what kind of market is going to be available for these small houses or tiny houses that you, as you define them. And if you, if you limit the size to a thousand square feet, and you take away a garage, which I think a prudent landlord would probably want to provide, then you're leaving, leaving with eight hundred square feet. And I don't think eight hundred square feet is enough to, um, provide for all the kinds of accommodations that a smaller house would need in born. If, I don't think that, I think that certainly a two-bedroom house would work with that, but I don't think a three-bedroom would, and I just wonder where the thousand square feet came from? What was the justification for that? What was the, what was the logic behind that choice?
John, do you have a comment on that?
I think that was the, uh, John Duggan, uh, recommendation from Cape Cod Commission in the, uh, initial stages. I could see exempting garage space and maybe use the, you know, maximum space as a gross living area.
I think that would be an excellent solution, actually.
Okay, so would, would we go a thousand minus, so the garage, it's just thousand square feet of gross living area?
The garage would be excluded, or it would, it would not be part of the allowable gross floor area. I think that would be a fine solution, just exempt the garage.
Okay.
Thousand square feet, anybody can put, anybody can put an apartment at a thousand square feet, that's for sure.
Okay, and my question would be the garage, would, would we wanna limit it to a one or two-car, you know, so I just don't wanna have an apartment with a five-car garage, so I just.
Yeah, uh, two cars should be sufficient, I think.
Jeannie?
Well, I think you could, that, you've effectively limited, you know, one-car garage, and I think there's some movement in America these days to using the garage as recreational space, and I think we have to be a little careful of that, but, um, I think a one-car garage, that was excluded from the gross floor, gross floor area would be perfectly acceptable. That, that would not allow people to, to build two or three-car garages that would not be included in the allowable gross floor area.
Right, and you also have the driveway for a second car, if, if they needed.
Exactly.
Thank you, Jeannie?
Just, uh, Gina's there, it's just to clarify, we're talking about a, a separate, like a separate detached ADU?
That's.
Because there's, there's another way of handling it, you could say eight hundred or a thousand square feet for an attached ADU, and then have a larger square foot allowance for a separate ADU.
Because of whether you attach it or detach it, because you can put detached within just a couple of feet. You know, so I, I don't know, I think the, to give the gross floor a living area and to exclude the garage, I think is a nice compromise.
Yeah, I think that's a good compromise, myself.
I, I agree. Chris?
Christopher, I was speaking from the planning board. I just wonder if, why don't we just make it lot-specific? As Jeannie was going over it before, if we have seven thousand plus, uh, housing dwelling units, and six thousand something of them are underneath.
and six thousand something of them are underneath that ceiling, twenty thousand square feet. Some lots might support a larger unit, say twelve hundred square feet, even attached or detached. And others lots might be smaller, as Dan Yu pointed out, on the north side of the bypass in Buzzards Bay, where you've got five and six thousand square foot lots up there, they wouldn't support it. Cause you have your general sideline setbacks, your front setback, your rear setback. Uh, I would think it would just be lot-specific and that would be up to the building inspector to look at.
A lot specific, a lot specific to what, to what criteria? I mean, I think that's a
If, if a lot, if a lot could support another eighteen hundred square feet, let them do it. If the lot doesn't support that
What if it's two lots? What if it's two lots that a person wants to?
If they're two lots, they're treated as two separates.
Right.
By the planning board.
I, I actually don't think the law, the laws you're proposing would allow that. Because the laws you're proposing would, would say that it can't be two lots. Well, that, that, it can't, it can't be, it can't be two separate lots, it sold as two separate lots. The point I'm getting at is that if, if, if you make you could make the square footage lot-dependent, as long as you didn't, um, allow both houses to exceed that.
Okay, I have one quick suggestion. Say, say for example, under forty thousand square feet, you get the thousand.
Which is most of them.
Right, so you get the thousand. Forty, an acre to eighty thousand square feet, you'd get, and I'm just throwing a number out, fifteen hundred square feet.
What if you have an acre and a half?
That's my next comment.
It's based on
More than that is conforming.
He's going somewhere.
Hold on, I'm going someplace.
Okay.
Less than forty thousand, you get the thousand. One acre, hold on, let me, let me finish. Less than forty thousand, you get a thousand. Forty thousand square feet, you get fifteen hundred square, fifteen hundred square feet of gross
Or something, or something.
And then if you've got eighty thousand square feet plus two thousand.
Now, that's reasonable.
That's, so it would be lot-specific by size.
That, that works.
Does it?
What about the maximum of two-bedroom with fifty percent of the maximum gross floor area of the primary, single-family dwelling?
That's
How does that fit in?
Right.
Right? It's not about lot size, it's about house size. So do we need to remove that?
That, that can be addressed as well, but I just, I'm trying to
They could be mutually exclusive. You could, you could say either or.
Okay, so would we want to consider on the, the gross living space? Something under forty thousand square feet, up to a thousand square feet of living space. An acre, forty thousand to, up to, up to eighty thousand, fifteen hundred, and eighty thousand and greater, two thousand.
I think that more, I think that is more reflective of what the market would want.
Okay, and then if we did that, then we're going to, the discussion about bedrooms. Liz, you were talking, which section do you want to talk about?
E, where we say, we say that the size is subordinate to and no greater than fifty percent of the maximum gross
You can't just say E, Liz.
Yeah.
Okay, E under four, one, two, one. That is where we're specifying the size. So if you're going to do what you're talking about, you're going to have to change that, that's all.
Okay.
Cause that, that is not about lot size.
Okay, it would be two bedrooms who are a thousand square feet and three bedrooms for forty thousand square feet or greater.
Forty thousand square feet lot?
Yeah.
Okay, cause we don't have a lot size thing going on here.
That's why we're, we're discussing it, yeah, we're gonna right now.
Okay.
Because I think what we're looking at is if on your E, a maximum of two bedrooms or a thousand square feet for those lots of less than forty thousand square feet. Subordinate no greater than fifty percent of the maximum gross floor area to the primary, single-family dwelling.
And just clarify, that would be, that would be the total lot that would include both the single-family dwelling and the accessory dwelling?
Correct. And then
I have something.
Forty thousand square feet would get you fifteen hundred square feet of gross living area and three bedrooms.
Or, well, that would be a maximum three bedroom.
Correct, you can do one if you wanted.
Right.
And the same thing, if you're a thousand, if you only wanted to put up one bedroom because your lot
As long as those are maxims, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Do you want to keep the subordinate, the, the ADU smaller than?
Yes.
So if someone has a small house, but they are on a big lot, do they get to build a big accessory dwelling?
No.
Okay.
No.
No.
Just how do we stop that?
Well, I think that's the language that we should focus on. We're trying to make this process easier for people and not more complicated with all these square footages. It's going to scare people away. I think, I think the language of subordinate to the main dwelling is what we should be focusing on.
Right.
You know, like
Couldn't you just make that a percentage of the main dwelling?
Exactly.
Fifty percent.
It is fifty percent.
I think that's, I think that's perfectly acceptable.
Yeah.
And if you had a small house on a large lot, you can build a big house and make your small house the accessory dwelling.
That's true.
And it should be handled on case-by-case basis. I think, I think everyone should come forward with their plans and discuss them as they are made.
But again, not every
I agree, but I think that, I think what we're trying to do is make a market for small or tiny or small houses, however you want to say it. We're trying to make a market for that.
Correct.
I think you need to be as flexible as we can without being destructive so that that market blooms.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
And, and I also think if you have an eighty thousand square foot lot or greater, just because you have the land space, your septic might not be able to go, because you might have wetlands and other setbacks. So that, you know, just because you have larger land area, doesn't mean you're going to get a two thousand square foot. Cause you have the setbacks in, in septic, because it's all based on bedrooms. So that, that's going to drive a lot of this down. This would be the maximum you can put on a lot if everything was perfect.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree.
Jim?
So Jim Robinson, planning board, to simplify this, and I liked what Mr. Farrell said. We do it like a sliding scale, lot-specific. So as you alluded earlier, forty and under, between forty and eighty, eighty to an acre, acre and a half. So a sliding scale, so anybody coming in that wants to add an, an accessory dwelling or they have a small house and they want to build a bigger house, it's spelled right out for them simply.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something?
Jen?
Um, I know that the zoning board appeals is very familiar with the gross floor area and lot coverage worksheet from section two, four, five, zero in the zoning bylaw. And it already has a maximum gross floor area and lot coverage for a very specific, um, overage for, for the property. And I will tell you that the planning office spends a lot of time working on these worksheets. So doing this
Jen, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. We've done sometimes ten gross floor area lot coverage worksheets for one property. Thank you.
I agree.
But doing it out this way is going to really complicate it because, um, right now, the definition under the maximum gross floor area excludes, uh, one-story garages that are less than four hundred and eighty square feet. It excludes, um, certain other things. So that's why we were just going by the gross floor area, fifty percent of that.
Could that
For the size-wise.
Specifically, could that specifically be extended to these small houses? I think if we, if we excluded garages up to that limit, I think it would be perfectly acceptable. As long as it's explicit in the, in the bylaw.
Yeah, and that could be actually added into the definition. So it would say, you know, the maximum gross floor area, um, less, um, garage space. But I think you'd have to say how much garage space? One, one garage, two garages, and then you start splitting hairs. Because what happens when somebody comes in with a seventy-nine thousand square foot lot?
But that
Then, then what do we do?
It's
That's not the intention to provide somebody with a three-car garage and a two-bedroom apartment. We're looking to provide a tiny dwelling for, or a small dwelling for someone.
Yeah.
Isn't that the whole idea?
I, I feel like we're getting, we're getting in the weeds here when it comes to this garage or no garage. Like, I feel like nine times out of ten, a person doesn't have a garage to offer to another person. Like, it's usually
I've never parked in my garage.
Right, it's usually like if, if they have one, it's full of junk or it's their car's garage and they don't have room, so
Consider the market, consider the market. I think that, that if, if somebody could offer a one-bedroom dwelling, say, with a garage, um, for twenty-three hundred dollars a month, that would be a great deal. And I think that, I mean, I've done the analysis. I think that, um, that kind of building would be affordable. And so I think that, that the, the, the bylaw, I don't allow it.
I agree. There's a, there's a gentleman on the Zoom meeting that had, that had, give me one second. He had his hand up and I don't, I can't see his name. Yes?
Chris Pine.
Chris Pine.
Okay.
Um, this may be a little bit related to that and like Jim, I, I am totally in, in favor of the intent of, of what we're trying to do and I, I, I get it and all, but I'd like to ask a question. I think it might be related to this and it might perhaps offer some kind of a solution. In reading through it, it, it seems like, uh, the, um, uh, the requirements of twenty-four fifty are, are being eliminated. And that's, that's not, that's not going to be, uh, a requirement unless it's less than five thousand square feet. This is probably kind of related to the issue with garage size and everything else. Um, can I ask what the, the intent is for, for doing that?
We're doing what? Accessory dwellings?
Eliminating twenty-four fifty as being applicable.
No, I think John can
John?
I got to find it here again.
All the worksheet.
Then I think if, I think it was
The worksheet?
I think it was proposed as a simplified way to deal with the, the notion of accessory dwellings. Twenty-four fifty, three, and
That's true.
These guys are trying to find a way to allow them.
The twenty-four fifty would also address, um, certain, uh, national requirements and GFA requirements for non-conforming lots as well too. And it, it seems like from the way it's written that perhaps there would be a loophole in between lots that are between five thousand and what would it be in R forty, R eighty? And that potentially you might have, um, people setting up accessory dwellings to get around, um, that that'd be adding a second kitchen. Uh, I could be wrong in the interpretation, but I, I could see a potential loophole that would develop there if we didn't continue to, um, have the, the requirements of twenty-four fifty, which would mean that if it's a non-conforming lot, they, they still need to at least have, uh, some, uh, warning, uh, Board of Appeals evaluation of whether it's, what its impact is on the neighborhood and that sort of thing. Since again, most of the, and potentially too, with, uh, a lot of these being in areas where there might be short-term rentals that, uh, people might potentially be maximizing what they can do with the intent for, uh, an accessory dwelling. But instead, you know, setting up for it and they perfectly would qualify for a building permit if it's, uh, a, a by right. But, uh, I, I think I've just got some concerns about just eliminating twenty-four fifty being applicable.
And I think Jen pointed out in her slideshow, what six thousand of the seven, six thousand plus or minus of the lots of seven thousand plus or minus are non-conforming, so it's what eighty-two percent of the lots are non-conforming. So that would be a vast majority of them.
And I, Rob Frangier from the, from the
Rob?
I understand, but you might also have in communities, cottage communities in, in town that, uh, people would, uh, tend, tend to maximize that and, and have, uh, uh, an ability to overbuild in those areas, so
What's wrong with that, Chris?
Exactly.
It's probably the same stuff that we face on a, on a regular basis, that, uh, people might be trying to put too much on a small lot.
But, but I think
How can we control that? How can we control that? How do we normally?
It's, it's lots, in my opinion, it's lot-specific, because each lot is going to be different. And it's also going to play into hand, is going to be the border health with the septic system that's currently in place. If you have these small lots, they're not going to be able to expand their system under the new rules of Title V. So they might have a beehive that is their leach pit. The new rules require them to do, spread it out over the whole area.
We would want, we would not want to be defeated though by a, by a, some kind of super solution to the septic problem. So, um, I, I agree with Chris in the sense that there should be some relationship to lot size.
But set, but setback, setbacks would do it because a smaller one would, would drive the house in. You couldn't expand it out to the, the lot line.
Right.
So every lot would be specific just based on setbacks and scale. Yeah, exactly, exactly with the scale.
Size of lot, it's all scalable.
Yep, and Hold on, hold on, Pete, hold on, Peter?
I just want to, with your permission, I'd like to hear from the building inspector, he's on the Zoom because he's the one that's going to have to enforce this or not enforce it if it's passed. I'd like to hear what he has to say on it.
Ken, do you have any comment on this?
No, I guess, I would just note that we're not, we're not only thinking
Hold on, hold on, I'm asking Ken a question.
Uh, actually, I'm pretty much at the will of the, uh, the zoning board, so
God bless you, Ken.
You know, uh, they are updating the building code, um, for the, uh, end of this year. And it may, you know, adjust a few things, but, you know, we still have a bylaw that we have to, that I enforce. So of course, if anything doesn't make any sense, that's what I am sending to the zoning board of appeals to discuss. And that's of course, uh, that's, you know, breaking the law, which is, you know, the zoning bylaws.
Correct.
But besides that, I, I really, you know, based on my end of it, I have to just take the, the discussion from the planning board and the zoning board of appeals and, and enforce it accordingly.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ken. And who, who else got a comment, question, anybody here?
Yes, Rob Frangier from the Housing Partnership. I just wanted to kind of tack on to our, go over what Chris was saying with eliminating the section twenty-four fifty. Um, we're trying to do this by right to make it easier for people to, to add the accessory dwelling units because we have such a housing shortage on Cape Cod and everything else. Um, if we left pieces of that, I could see it getting complicated and people just throwing in the flags saying, forget about it. And it kind of hurting us in a, in a way. So I, I disagree with what you're saying, Chris, about keeping bits and pieces of it. I think if, if we did that, it would, it would just hurt what we're trying to do here. So I think the lot size or scaling it, that, I mean, that does make sense. Um, but keeping that section, I think, would, would hurt us with what we're trying to do.
Liz?
I would just say
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I, I've had conversations with people about their experiences trying to do an accessory dwelling and it, they were just horrible. And they, you know, so I'm just, I think, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Rob?
Rob, what Rob is saying is we are trying to simplify without letting, you know, creating a free-for-all. That's all.
You know, we don't, we don't want to, the, the idea here is to create a market incentive to have, to provide smaller houses. That's what we're looking for. And I think we have to be careful that we, we don't want to thwart that by being too restrictive in what we think, um, is, is okay for us. I think we have to look further and think what the market is looking for. And I think the market is looking for a whole range of small dwellings that might range from like five hundred square feet to fifteen hundred square feet. And that's all I was trying to get at before with my plea for a larger square footage. Is that somehow we appeal to the larger market, not just to the market that we imagine might happen, but that the margin, the market that would naturally develop as a result of the limits that we set. I think that's what we have to be really careful of.
And I think to add to what Jim said, you know, my intent really isn't to put any more restrictions. There's, you know, our experience, my experience now is that there are a lot of restrictions and it, and it is a crazy hassle to do it. But we want to make sure that, um, that the intent is there and, and that it's not abused, that we're not increasing and, and that it's not abused, that we're not increasing short-term rentals, that we're real about our ability to, uh, enforce all this. And that, you know, the, the, the lot requi, uh, the setbacks are absor, observed, that, that modest GFA requirements, proportion of, of what's there to the lot size is, is reasonable. And my, my concern is that there potentially could be some loophole there and just should be looked at a little bit more carefully.
Okay. And it, and just for the remainder, if you can make your name mentioned in the, the board you represent, for a recording secretary who's going to have a field day trying to figure out who's talking. That's, I just, for, for that purpose, I'm, I'm asking.
You'd be surprised how easy that is.
Again, you didn't say your name.
Well, again, I'm not the. Hold on, hold on. I am not the one doing the minutes. I'm just, out of respect for the person who is doing the minutes, I'd like to give him that courtesy. So that's what I'm asking, please. So I think we could take a, a good look at this idea of the square footage and come up with an, with, with a good compromise. I think staff can work on it, reach out to everybody. Is there any other line item on here that people want to address?
The only other thing I, I notice.
Who, now you're going to mention your name.
My name is Jim Byer.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Um, the only thing I had a question about, and I don't feel so, so strongly about this, is that there was a passage in there that said neither the main house nor the accessory, the main user, the accessories has to be owner occupied. I do not know why that needs to be in there.
I thought we, John?
During our discussions, uh, that came up. John Duggan, Planning Board. Um, that came up during our discussions. And, uh, the thought is, we're trying to create more housing. So if you're a snowbird and you leave your primary residence for however long, a minimum of 90 days or whatever, but there aren't really restrictions on that. It could become another dwelling unit for either workforce housing or, uh, off-season housing. So we didn't want to be any more restrictive on that as well.
Hi, um, this is Elsa Beistrum. I'm with, uh, a member of VDA.
Yep.
I have a question also about that occupancy requirement. This is section 4122. Uh, does that mean that the principal dwelling can be rented as well? If there are no owner occupancy requirements?
As proposed, yes.
I guess, I guess the reason.
Who's this?
This is Jim Byer.
Thank you.
I guess the reason that I questioned that was, I don't know why that passage for allowance would be in this law. I mean, what are we trying to do by that? What are, what are we trying to accomplish by allowing non-resident owners?
Jen?
What's this, what's?
Jen's getting an answer for you.
Jen Copeland, Town Planner. I think the purpose of this section is to increase the availability of rentals in Bourne. So it would, it would increase our housing stock of rentals substantially if both primary and accessory could be rented.
So what that means is that you're increasing.
Here, again, a name.
James Byer.
Yep.
Easy to hear. What that means is that you are increasing the chance of speculative fires, which I don't think is particularly good for the neighborhood myself, as a, as a resident.
So you, you would think that owner occupied on one of the units?
Well, I, Jim Byer again, CA Chairman. I don't think that passage belongs in this zoning ordinance. What does it have to do with what we're doing here?
So. So you'd like to have that section deleted?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to have that section deleted.
Okay. And if we did that, there'd be no, no way, and, and again, open for discussion, is whether it's owner occupied or not. It doesn't matter either way.
Well, Jim Byer again.
Yep.
VC Chairman. I, that's a separate issue from what we're talking about tonight. And I agree that that, um, provision may allow for more available housing in Bourne, but I'm not sure it's the kind of available housing that the people that live in these, live in, live in these neighborhoods would want. And I, I just think there has to be some consideration given to that. I'm a full-time resident here. I don't want a bunch of renters living in my street. And I realize what a selfish point of view that is, but, um, and I also, again, support this idea of the housing initiative. But I think that you have to realize that people don't want a bunch of renters living in their neighborhood. They want the houses to be owned by people that live in them and care about them.
So.
I think we have to realize that, that's all I'm saying.
So on the reverse side, instead of deleting that, why don't we put in there that one of the units has to be owner occupied?
That's what I would suggest, yes.
Okay. And it wouldn't matter whether it's the accessory unit, because a lot of times you take the main house, build the accessory unit, take an older person, move them to the smaller unit, and make a family available for the larger house. So it doesn't have to be the primary or the accessory. Okay.
Rob Fran, Rob Franjier from the Housing Partnership again. I, I hear what you're saying, Jim. I, it, I get being a, a year-round resident in the town of Bourne makes sense. But I think that occupancy requirement, keeping that section, is really important. Um, we obviously want to make sure people aren't short-term renting. So obviously, if you get rid of that, there goes the 90-day piece, which we, you know, that's the whole point of this, the, the summer rentals.
No, with 4122A.
Oh, for just the A, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the whole section. I apologize. Um, on top of that, though, sorry about that. The, even the A section, if we got rid of that, I think we need whatever rentals we can get because there's such a shortage. So I, I think leaving that as-is would, would be key for just inventory. We have nothing. I'm a real estate broker in town. I own a real estate company, and I can tell you, every week, we have somebody who's looking for year-round rentals. So, I mean, we're not, you know, they're not just going to rent these houses out typically for, you know, for a week or two. I mean, you, you, we, we have families and people that need, you know, need houses, need rentals. And I think getting rid of that section, whether it's owner occupied or not.
Well, then maybe we ought to, maybe we want to put some kind of limitations on, limitations on time of rentals, though.
There is.
There is, 90 days.
You, you, Rob Franjier from Housing Partnership. You're not going to have any short-term rentals, which is the whole goal. That's what we want, is to have year-round rentals.
Or, yeah, long-term.
Long-term, long-term, correct, yeah, long-term. Uh, anything over 90 days. So you won't, you know, you won't have the Airbnbs and stuff staying, you know, on your street. It's, it's going to be long-term rentals. So I, I would say, you know, from the, a partnership, from the Housing Partnership, I think keeping that in there would, would, would continue to help us, if you will, in terms of inventory and having rentals.
So.
No, I get it, I get it, I, I get it.
Okay, so.
I, do you have any comment?
Who, is it, Ms. Pine?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so, again, I, I appreciate the, the intent. I, I appreciate having, um, some, some restriction on the, the length of the, or the limits on, on the rentals. But, uh, again, um, if there, unless we have mechanisms in place, and I realize this could be totally outside this discussion, to enforce all of that, uh, to me, I would, I would believe that most people would, would rent to the, the highest-paying renter. And, and that being said, if a short-term rental is most attractive and that option is there, I, I support fully having one unit, doesn't matter which, owner occupied. I think that that, um, addresses all the concerns about the potential, uh, for need for additional income, you know, minimizes the chance for short-term rentals, uh, certainly provides for, uh, owner upkeep of the property. But I think we have to be real as to whether in this town we have all the resources to enforce all these regulations. I know we want to make it as available as possible, but we got to enforce it if we put these laws in place.
We agree with that.
Amen, amen to that, absolutely amen to that.
I agree. Amanda?
I thought that we had said at one point that the ACU was supposed to be, the owner was not supposed to be in the subordinate one.
That, that didn't matter, because they could move from the larger to the smaller to make the larger available.
So the larger, like, dwelling could be the rental, is what we're talking about?
Correct.
Does owner occupied include, um, second homes? Are they owner occupied? Well, people own homes and they don't live in them all year, but they're just empty. So, but is that, where do they fall?
Rob, Rob Franjier from the Housing Partnership. I think, to your point, is there's a ton of second, there's a ton of second homes on, in Bourne, if you will. And if you make it a requirement to be a primary residence, then you would lose all those ADUs. So I think leaving it with no restrictions is, is the way to go. Because if you do, if you do put a requirement that it has to be a primary home, that means they live here year-round, they file their, you know, their taxes here. And then, you know, again, there's a certain percentage of, of homes that are second homes that have these accessory dwelling units or could, could have them, that we would, we would limit the, the inventory again. And I don't know, take away, I think, from what we're trying to do in terms of making it easier for people to build these accessory dwelling units.
But the owner occupancy in either one, as the way I read it, doesn't mean you have to live here year-round. It just means one of the units is going to be owner occupied, so you could, they, they occupy one of the units and the other one's rented out.
Three, agreed.
Occupancy includes three months. I lived there three months of the year.
If you own it and you can occupy it for five months, three months, that's wherever you want to, that's your occupancy.
Mr. Chair.
That, you should allow for somebody, this is Jim Byer again.
Yep.
You should allow for somebody to be able to move into their accessory unit while they re-good the kitchen in the main unit. There shouldn't be anything in the law that stops that kind of thing.
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, Chris?
I agree with what Jim had said before. And my concern is if there is no owner occupancy requirement, that we're going to have speculation out there. Some developer's going to come along and go, oh, I can, there's an existing dwelling there, I can build something over there or rent them both out. And now we become, our neighborhoods are no longer neighborhoods.
Right.
They're housing stock, and that's it. And that's, that is a big concern. And I think a lot of people in town would be very concerned. And I would think if that remained in there, that was, this would go down in flames in, at town meetings.
Jeannie?
Yeah, I, Gina Zarevitz, Planning Board. I would reiterate what, um, back up what Chris was saying about the ownership. And we also should just put a definition here possibly, because ownership, we've, it's been, come into the news recently about joint ownership. Um, so we should put fractional ownership. We should put 50% or greater is owned, you know, a person's on the deed. We should define ownership.
Right.
And then also.
I'd even force that.
I agree.
That, that would be a, enforcement would be a Ken issue. And Ken loves the enforcement component. We, we know that.
That's surreal.
Yeah, but sorry, Ken, but, yeah, the question might be enforcement. But a lot of the bylaws, when we write them, the intent of the bylaw is to make sure that this is what we're looking for. And if we find anything, somebody reports it, goes to the code enforcement. John?
John Duggan, Planning Board. I, I appreciate what everyone's saying, and I know that enforcement's always a difficult, it's a leap of faith, and it's impossible to really enforce all of these existing regulations. Um, I do think that by creating an ADU zoning that makes it by right and streamlines the process, taking away rights from the primary residence does not seem to be, to me, uh, uh, an easy path to doing an ADU. So you have the right to do what you want with your home now. I don't see people jumping in to buy single families at this point in time, you know, because of an in-law zoning that we have or anything else. But I really think taking away rights from somebody's primary residence in order to get an accessory dwelling unit would be a mistake.
I agree. I, I, this is Jim Byer. I believe that people ought to be able to do what they want to do with the property. And, um, I don't, actually, I don't think 2450 needs to be eliminated. I think 2450 is still a pretty good passage, to the extent that it doesn't interfere with what we're trying to do here, which is to make smaller residents available to, to people who wouldn't ordinarily otherwise live in Bourne. That's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to increase the speculative market or make, um, rentals more available to people. We are trying to increase the amount of people that can live or rent, either own or rent a place in Bourne. And I think this accessory ownership thing works as long as you don't, um, restrict the kinds of things people can do with it.
Correct. Peter?
Peter Meyer, uh, Select Force Representative, Affordable Housing Trust. I guess the bottom line is, is this conversation has been long overdue for many years. We're on the Cape, we're in the Cape, 13 out of 15 communities already permit this by right. So we're just, you know, we're just late to the game. And when roughly 50% cross the bridge every day to go to work, and then they go back over the bridge to go to New Bedford or Fall River because they can't afford to live here in Bourne, or my own high school graduates can't afford to stay here after they graduate high school or college. I mean, I just think, I just think by doing, by having this discussion and bringing this bylaw forward to town meeting, we're just, we're doing our part to try to create, create some affordable or workforce housing in town. And as long as it fits the character of the neighborhood, doesn't stick out like a sore thumb, you know, um, be, you know, site-specific, I think it will go a long way. I mean, I wouldn't want to ruin the aesthetics of the neighborhood, and I, and I know people say not in my backyard, but, you know, just take it by case, by case basis, and just use common sense when doing this, and I think it will go a long way.
And, and Peter, to, to your point, I think there was, there were a lot of accessory dwelling units currently in the town of Bourne that are illegal. Let's legitimize those.
Exactly.
You know, we don't make it with the fire code, the building code, and legitimize those and make them available. Yes?
Stephen Kay in the zoning board. So if it goes to, uh, these accessory dwellings with three bedrooms, that's an impact on, on the schools.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't, in my belief, I don't think it should be, uh, three bedrooms at all, two at max.
That's, the bylaw that we have written here is two bedrooms.
It is two.
Yeah.
I heard three mentioned earlier.
There was some discussion, two, three bedrooms.
Thank you.
But I agree, the impact on, on schools, give you one, two bedrooms, and that for workforce housing, for housing, and for, also for affordability, if you start making them three bedrooms, I agree. I agree with your point. Anybody else have a point on the, um, the bylaw that they want to bring up?
I have a question.
Jen, Jen's got.
My name is, my name is John O'Brien, and I'm, and I'm on the zoning board.
Yes?
And my question is a broader question, and I looked at the statistics of all the towns on the Cape who have, um, pretty open accessory dwelling laws. In the long picture, and I don't know whether it's a concern in other communities or not, but I read something almost every day about the concern, in the long run, concern about the water conditions in the, on the Cape. And the, and the fact that there's a single source of water in the Cape. We're about, all of these towns, and we are about to talk about adding tremendously more septic systems. And those septic systems are going to add more and more problems with our water. In a, in a larger picture, has anybody ever thought about that or expressed any concern about that?
I, I think it's been well-publicized, well-talked about. And I think every, every town on the Cape is looking at that issue.
Mr. Chair, I think what I had said earlier, um, lot size is going to dictate whether or not a new accessory dwelling unit can be built based on the Title V rules. And the Title V rules, as we all know, are going to be changing again. Um, so it's going to dictate how much affluent we're pushing back into the ground. So the accessory dwelling unit, if the lot is big enough to assume So the accessory dwelling unit, if the lot is big enough to assume a new septic system or an enlarged septic system, then we can build a larger accessory dwelling unit. Smaller lots are not going to allow it.
But also on that, it's not only the water that gets flushed into the ground, it's the water that gets drawn out of the ground, so they're looking at both, portable and.
Right.
That's the one that concerns me.
Which one, portable?
Portable.
Drawing the water, how long are we going to be able to continue to have portable water as we, unless something very serious happens to keep the water portable?
I, I'm with you, and there are groups out there that have a good count on gallons per day. Jeannie.
Gina Zarevitz, Planning Board, this is a different topic. Are we going to have, in this agreement, are we going to have requirements or limitations on the amount of people that can be in this place at the same time, besides the obvious Board of Health, septic, and these requirements? But those are the controls we also should look at, just so it's not.
Now, that, I don't know how we could do, I know we can limit it by bedroom, I don't know if you can limit by number of people per bedroom. I don't, I don't know if there's a bylaw or a law that exists, I don't know. If, anybody else has got an input on that? It'd be great to.
This is Jim Byer, what's, CA Chairman, what's the, what's the fear there? Is it that you're, that you're going to have parties that people come to with 30 attendees?
Yeah.
Or hotbeds?
Or college kids off on spring break.
Okay, okay.
You know, even if it's rented for a long time, yeah.
That's fair, that's fair, but don't we have laws to deal with that?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm just wondering what the application procedure, how, how, how much detail we're going to get involved with that, that's something that people are going to be concerned about.
And one of the other issues for people who rent is hot bonking, that the bed's available for eight hours, and it's 888, there's three people in that bed.
And on that same token, how many are we going to allow a year?
But, again, I don't know if there's a bylaw that, that restricts that or limits it.
Yeah, this is for real.
What is that?
That's not having money.
What, I just.
I just, I just, Rob Franjier from the Housing Partnership again, I just wanted, just from an affordability standpoint, just to throw it out, because I, I hear what you're saying, Jean, and like, the fear of all this happening, you know, the whole, like, we need to do something on Cape Cod or in Bourne for affordable housing, and this ADU makes such a huge impact, you know, in terms of people that are looking for housing, it's obviously workforce, and then people who just want to live here year-round, you know, and I'm sure you guys saw the Cape Cod Commission's report, right, with housing that came out. I think to buy, right now, with interest rates and everything, to buy a single-family home on Cape Cod, you have to make, to stay within the federal government's guidelines of 30% of like, your gross median, like, income and all that stuff, you have to make $230,000 a year to buy a house on Cape Cod. So just don't lose sight that we're doing this to help people that need to stay on Cape Cod, that want to work here and live here. So, you know, we're, we're not adding this to, to, you know, make people rich, or, or, you know, have investment properties, we're doing this because the 50% of Cape Cod's workforce is leaving Cape Cod, that's what's going on here.
But, in defense, some people are going to make money.
Correct, correct, correct.
Our goal is not to encourage that, our job is to encourage workforce housing or accessory dwelling. So that's what we, we can't prevent everything from happening, and, in, in this economy, you have to make money to be able to afford to build that accessory dwelling, because people aren't going to give it away.
Correct.
So we're just trying to make it at a reasonable rate and affordable, that's what I think we're trying to do.
There was a fantastic, Gina Zarevitz, Planning Board.
Hold on, Joe, hold on, Jeannie.
Gina Zarevitz.
Jeannie, hold on, hold on, please, please.
Gina Zarevitz.
One person at a time.
Gina Zarevitz, Planning Board, there was actually a wonderful presentation about this at the One Camp Summit, and the best example is, just not to make mistakes, other people have, and we had, a speaker was there presenting the nightmare scenarios that they've encountered in Colorado and places where Airbnbs just kind of ran amok and chased out the workforce housing. And someone that used to own a landscape business depends on that labor and people being here, I completely appreciate this, and we've done our best to approve mixed-use situations, you know, even in the technology commercial parks, there's places where people can rent and live now in some of these areas, so we'll do what we can to make accommodations. But the reality is, you know, we're a desirable place for people to come, and there's going to be people that try and take advantage, and, you know, we have to keep in mind that we're going to need controls and checks, because we're going to have a floodgate of people applying for stuff, possibly, and we have to be ready for that.
There's a gentleman on the Zoom that has his hand up.
Yeah, well, I, this is Jim Byer, I guess, I guess my point was that we have to incentivize people to do these things that we're talking about. And while I fully agree that we can't become an Airbnb haven, people still need to have an economic incentive to build the kind of houses that we're talking about. So I don't, I guess I'm just pleading for things that are not so restrictive that people will step back and say, I don't want to do this. You have to have economic incentives for people to move forward and, and build these kind of houses and accommodations that we want them to build.
I, I agree 100%, and that's what I said, what we're trying to do is get the accessory dwelling, and people, some people are going to make money, and I don't, we're not here to restrict that, this is a, an economy that you need to make money to pay your expenses, so we're behind you 100% on that. Anybody else? Give me a second, I'm going to make sure we got everybody in Zoom covered here before, because I can't see their hands, all of that. Anybody else on Zoom have a question or comment? Ken.
I'd like to add, Ken Murphy, Building Commission of Town of Bourne, I'd like to add the, and remind everyone, the Town of Bourne is 70% in a flood zone, so when someone will come into the office and they would like to do an accessory unit, and they realize the cost, and then why have to report this cost to FEMA to let them know that they're going to be 70% or their value of their house alone? A lot of people are turned away by that, because of course, the cost is, you know, going to be way up there, and that means they'll have to lift their house up out of the flood zone. That turns into deciding, all right, maybe I'll just do my basement instead, and, and take my chances, and renovate that without nobody knowing. So then I end up spending the majority of my time enforcing or going after people who have done illegal basement construction work. So whatever you guys decide to do, which way you go with this, you have to remember there's a large population or large piece of land in the Town of Bourne that's in a flood zone, and that affects that number when they decide to try to either add accessory structure or not, okay? I'm dealing with a number of projects right now that, you know, their partners or their kids like to move back home, but to add a accessory structure or add more to their property kind of moves everything away, and then the kids, you know, deciding not to move in with the parents.
Thank you, Ken, thank you. Anybody else on Zoom have any questions or comments? Nobody, okay, good. Anybody here have any questions or comments? Chris.
Just one more, I am concerned with what you brought up about the hotbed issue. IANA's had a big problem with that, you know, you rent out a two-bedroom apartment, and the next thing you know, there's, and it's one bed per bedroom, but there's four people living there. The J1 visa people come in, especially during the summer months, they're here for 90 days, and you've got one guy going to work at seven in the morning, he comes home at four, the guy at four, he leaves and he goes off and he works all night. That's going to impact your Title V and the amount of water you're drawing, pumping out of the ground. So I don't know how we address that, and how it can be enforced, but it might be some sort of police agreement that they have to provide for that accessory dwelling unit.
If anybody has any suggestions or comments on that.
What if?
Please, send them to Jen.
Okay.
Because I have no, I, I have not seen any kind of regulation on that, so if you hear or see something, just something we might be interested in seeing, I'm not saying we have to adopt it, but if anybody has it, Amanda.
The other towns that are successfully doing this, have we talked to them, like their town halls and seen what they're doing that's effective to avoid things like that, and to avoid people abusing the system?
We'll reach out.
I have an answer.
I have not, I, I will reach out to Planning Board members.
There was an article about Falmouth, and they're, they're trying to do an Airbnb regulation, because for me, part of this is, I don't know how we regulate Airbnbs.
They're short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals.
Yeah.
And how does that?
I, well, whatever, that, that's not really important, but Falmouth is trying to encourage people to, they're paying them, basically, to do longer term.
That makes sense.
Again, I think if we look at the accessory dwelling, let's captivate this, look at this, try to get it to town meeting, and then your Airbnb, your short-term rentals, if there's an issue with that, we can always look at that later. But I, I think with the affordable dwelling units, I think we need more affordable units for younger people, workforce, just to make more affordable units available in the town. So, anybody else have any questions or comments? If anybody reads through the zoning bylaw, if they could just email Jen as the point person for any other suggestions, we will modify this for the discussion we had tonight, if that's fair enough, and then we'll send that back out. Anybody else have any questions or comments on the, on the article as kind of proposed and slightly amended the other night?
Jim Byer, one more comment.
Laura Stewart, yeah.
I hate to extend the meeting, but.
No, no.
I would say that we can incentivize people to make affordable units if the restrictions on these ADUs are loose enough.
Right.
And, and, and I don't think it's any more complicated than that, we don't have to make affordable units, the very fact that people have the opportunity to have accessory dwellings on their property would incentivize them to provide affordable housing to the, to the people that need it. I don't think we need to worry about the affordable housing part of it, I think we need to worry about the housing part of it.
But.
Affordable, affordable will come.
Exactly, with accessory dwelling unit comes affordability, and that's what we're looking at doing. Right, right. Right, I, I'm not trying to drive a price per square foot, and all, the market's going to handle that. So without any, I would, if there's no other discussion, I don't want to hold anybody else up, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, if we have to go by.
So move, so.
Okay, so, there's a motion made, seconded, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded, to adjourn this, and then the Planning Board's going to go back to the regular session, and then we can make our own thing.
Is he, we're going to have to adj.
So.
Thank you very much for listening to our.
Oh, no, we appreciate you guys joining us, so, we love the input, so we will take those and modify them. So with the Housing Partnership Committee members, you want to vote to adjourn?
So move.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else from the Housing Partnership?
Yes.
Okay, and yes, so the Housing Partnership is adjourned, Housing Trust?
Yeah.
Peter? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Ken, thank you very much, anybody else? Housing Trust is adjourned, the Zoning Board of Appeals?
No, thank you very much.
That was Jim.
To adjourn.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Chris? Elsa? Okay, Steve?
Hi.
And Wade? Okay, ZBA is adjourned, Planning Board members?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, now we're back into our regular meeting, thanks, everybody, for your input, we appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you. And with nothing left on the agenda, I would entertain a motion for the Planning Board to adjourn.
So move.
Hold on.
Do you just want to say the public hearing date is March 6? I, didn't you want to reiterate that?
Okay, the public hearing date, if this goes through the Planning Board, would be March 6, on the Planning Board meeting. Motion to adjourn. Seconded by Jeannie, roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. Yes, we're adjourned, thank you guys very much.